This meeting of the Bloomington School Board to order. This evening, we are missing two members, Rick Oliva and Jim Smarow. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I would like to ask for a motion to cancel the study session that's scheduled for tonight upon the conclusion of the school board meeting, and establish a closed session for negotiations upon conclusion of this school board meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'd like to ask now for approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda, part A agenda.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First, we would like to recognize students, staff, and public. And recently, the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Conference was held January fourteenth and fifteenth, and part of the conference was a recognition luncheon at which MSBA presented its annual awards. Our own Don Steigav received the Director's Award for 2015-16. This award recognizes members who have completed 100 or more hours of attendance at MSBA and NSBA-sponsored meetings and activities over a four-year period. Congratulations, Don. The Bloomington School Board is one of six in the state to receive a district award of distinction from the Minnesota School Board Association. This award recognizes school boards where a majority of its members have received at least 100 hours of board training. And we will be hanging this in the boardroom here somewhere. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? And Kent Carjala has called in. Would you like to step over to the podium and just announce your name and your address, please?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Kent Carjala. My address is 10113 Humboldt Avenue South. Good evening, school board. Superintendent Fujitaki. My name is Kent Carjala. I'm a Bloomington parent and the head coach of the Bloomington High School Mountain Bike Team. Maybe you've heard of our team or the Minnesota High School Mountain Bike League. The Minnesota League is part of a larger organization called NICA, which stands for National Interscholastic Cycling Association. It was, NICA was founded in Berkeley, California in 2009, and currently, there are high schools' mountain bike leagues in 19 states, including Minnesota. The Minnesota League was founded in 2012 and has rapidly grown to include 51 teams, about 753 student athletes, and over 300 coaches from throughout the state. The Bloomington team has competed in the league for three years. I've been the coach for two seasons. We're currently a smaller team made up of athletes from both Kennedy and Jefferson High Schools as well as the middle schools. The team is open to all Bloomington boys and girls in seventh through 12th grades. Part of why I'm here, we've been trying to raise awareness of the team in the schools with posting meetings, having flyers, just to get some recruitment information out there. We would like to see the team recognized in the schools and ultimately classify as a letter sport, similar to other clubs or activities. And last spring, one of our athletes submitted an application for our team to be recognized as a club. That club, that application was not approved because there is not currently an independent provider policy on the books in Bloomington. And our club would fall within that category. But because of the application, that started the process going, I guess, I was speaking with Mr. Nyberg at Jefferson High School, and that kind of got the ball rolling to have them look into the independent provider concept. So I was encouraged to learn recently that the school board policy committee is going to be taking a look at this issue in March, if I understand. And so that's the main reason I'm here tonight, just to make you aware of our team and encourage you, or if you have any influence on that committee, to get them to approve this policy. I know it would greatly help our team with recruitment and visibility. I simply think more kids would participate in our sport if they just knew the team existed. A little about myself, I'm a lifelong mountain bike rider, racer. One of the things I like best about coaching the team is introducing kids to a new sport and watching their skills progress during the season. Everyone's score on the team counts towards the overall score of the team regardless of placing, and nobody gets cut or rides the bench in our sport. We have a pretty strong foundation built currently in Bloomington. I've recruited four other great assistant coaches that helped us last year, made up of bike industry professionals, local business owners, doctor, and also one Bloomington faculty member. All of these assistants bring a wealth of knowledge about training, racing, nutrition, et cetera. So we're very fortunate to have such a good group of volunteers helping with the team. So I feel we are poised for success in Bloomington with this staff, and we just need the recognition in the school to take it to the next step and recruit and build our team. So, once again, I'm strongly encouraging you to approve this independent provider concept, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That brings us to part A, the board business. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor, this includes our minutes, personnel items, field trips, contracts and agreements, and finances. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? None. Thank you. Brings us to part B, the Skyward Agreement. Would someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the agreement with Skyward.
Second?
And our Executive Director of Finance and Support Services, Rod Zevkovich, is here to tell us a little bit about this.
Good evening, Chair Barlata, Superintendent Fujitaki. I'm here tonight, kind of a second phase of our analysis of our software systems. John Weiser came a little over a month ago to the board with a contract for moving our student system away from Ties. This is the second part of our systems, main systems, that we're using for business and HR at Ties. We did an analysis comparison of another major vendor, which is Skyward. They are kind of the two big players in Minnesota, Skyward and Ties. It was determined, both for functionality and cost basis, that we will move to Skyward January 1 of 2017.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Next, we have a resolution for the board regarding rightsizing the budget to. Someone like to move that resolution?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the rightsizing the budget list of budget adjustments of 2.5 million as listed below, and directs the administration to develop the 2016-2017 budget using these adjustments to meet rightsizing the budget target. Number one is staffing reductions, 807,400. Two, operational adjustment, 752,000. Number three is budget shifts, 950,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And our Director of Finance was going to talk about that.
This is a list very similar to the list that we provided to the board back on November 23rd when we had a discussion about setting a target amount of the 200, 2.5 million dollars. As you'll see, there were some adjustments made within that list between the period of time, but for the most part, it's sticking with the basic items that were on the original list.
Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
It brings us here to our Board Legislative Committee, their plan and priorities for the 2016 legislative session. And our chairperson for this committee is Natalie Corman, and she's got a little PowerPoint for us.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So, good evening. So the members of the Legislative Committee are Tom Bennett, Don Steigav, and myself. And we have met a few times, and also met with Superintendent Fujitaki to discuss, you know, what our board's legislative priorities would be for this coming session for our platform. So we're here tonight to bring you the platform that we are proposing and wanting, looking for approval from the board, from the rest of the board members. So, our priorities. Let's see if I did this right. Yep, legislative priorities. So the first one is adequate education funding. So as we know, for every single thing and every single program and initiatives that we want to accomplish in Bloomington, and, you know, for any other school districts, we always need the right amount of money. So we're talking about the basic formula funding that should be tied to inflation because it continues to lag behind inflation even as expectations for public schools rise. So this is the only way that we can also meet the goals that are outlined in the World's Best Workforce Law. And also, in the last, the last point that we have, we have Minnesota's budget surplus offers legislators the opportunity to fulfill the state's responsibility to provide adequate funding. So for this, for all those reasons that you probably already read before coming to the meeting, we are proposing that we include this in our platform. The second one that we're including is adequate funding for mandates. So to reduce the special education credit subsidy by 25%. Because funding has not kept pace with mandated programs, then we are including this in our legislative platform. And also, in the last point, we see the current MDE report show that over 600 million in funding meant for regular classroom instruction is redirected to cover underfunded state mandated special education programs. Our next point for, our next priority is for early learners and pre-K. We all know the importance of early learning education, and, you know, we all know what research is showing about the quality, what quality early learning education programs do for our kids and for their success, and how it better prepares children who take advantage of a state's recent investments in all their kindergarten. And Minnesota being the third most expensive, third most expensive state in the nation for childcare, need to close the opportunity gap in accessing quality early childhood programs. Also, because of our Bloomington Public Schools' pathways to graduation vision calls for quality early childhood programs for all children, we continue to support this. The next one is commitment to educational research. So for this one, I'm going to ask Superintendent Fujitaki that you give us a little bit more of information.
Thank you.
Please.
The 2012 legislature enacted a new policy titled Innovation Zone Law. The scope and breadth of this law as far with respect to innovation was limited because of restrictions and mandates imposed by the No Child Left Behind Law. With the federal government's recent reauthorization of the No Child Left Behind Law creates an opportunity to enhance this innovation law. Therefore, our Senator Wicklin will be presenting a bill to enhance this law as far as the scope and breadth of innovation that's allowed. So administration is very supportive of this bill.
Thank you. Our next priority is quality compensation, QCOM. We're including this one this year. Continue funding of QCOM, voluntary state grant program enacted by the Minnesota Legislature in 2005, providing, as we know, significant benefits to improving teacher development and evaluation, including coaching strategies through the use of peer coaches. The result is improved teaching practices and ultimately, student achievement. QCOM has also allowed the development of customized improvement rubrics for licensed staff, including special education, school psychologists, and counselors. So it pretty much provides with better quality for an evaluation system, which we know has worked in Bloomington. And the next one, the vacancy in office of all school board member, of a school board member, sorry. Repealed amended statute for fill, filling?
Yeah.
A school board vacancy and return to the old law. This is something that has been supported by both MSBA, recommended by them, by MSBA and AMSD. So that, you know, that can, that 2014 legislature amended statute, which changed the process of filling a school board vacancy. The new law requires interested persons to apply for the candidacy and the district to hold special election at least 120 days after the vacancy. Current law imposes unnecessary costs in the special election and delays four months or greater to fill a vacancy. The former law, supported by, as I said before, MSBA and AMSD, allow preceding school board members to appoint a replacement within 30 days of a vacancy. So this is the proposed legislative plan that we have brought for you today. It aligns with the school board's legislative priorities, then present a proposed plan of action on those bills. To encourage legislators to introduce bills that align with the school board's legislative priorities, monitor identified bills that may not align with legislative priorities, consider those bills for school board discussion and action. And here's the timeline. The Board Legislative Committee meeting to establish legislative plan and priorities. Then we're presenting this plan tonight to you and the priorities, and we're seeking approval. In February, we will have our school board with legislators forum. We still don't know the date. And on March 8 is when the legislative session starts, 2016. So this is all we have for tonight. So if anybody has any question, questions?
Just a quick comment, actually. I just want to say thanks for the work you guys put into this. It's not easy to understand what they're, what they want, what they'll accept over in St. Paul. So thanks to the committee for doing the work, for the district for sharing ideas.
And Director Steigav or Director Bennett, do you want to add anything else?
I think you are quite thorough. Well done. I think this is a great legislative plan. I think we all work together, together with the three of us, all of our input, along with the district, and we're all in agreement that this is the way to move forward, and this is what we want to use to advocate for our district, and let's hope all this stuff gets happened in the next year.
I like it. If you need any help over in St. Paul, I'm sure I could have a free day or two, drag me over there.
So would you like a show of hands or something to show that we support you? I mean, we don't have a resolution, but...
Make a resolution.
All right. Be my guest. Do you want to go ahead?
Yes, I move that the board accepts the legislative platform for the 2016 legislative session.
Second? No. Okay. If there's no further discussion, we had a little discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 None opposed? Okay. So there you have it. We support the Legislative Committee plan and priorities. Next, I have a short report on our closed session that we had on Monday, January 11. The school board superintendent and members of the cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, January 11 for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. No school board action was taken or required. Thank you. Board member reports?
Madam Chair.
Director Bergstrom, yes.
All right. See, I attended a PTSA meeting over at Normandale Hills Elementary at that time. This was a couple of weeks ago. They were getting ready to kick off their annual read-a-thon. That went from, and I say went because I think yesterday, or it just ended on the 22nd, went from January 9th to the 22nd. That particular event provides 40% or more of their funding for the year, and we should know what the numbers are in from the proceeds of the read-a-thon. But just a quick thanks to all the folks at Normandale Hills and all the schools that do their fundraisers for all the hard work and energy and effort that goes into those. They're not easy to put off. Had a custodial negotiations meeting that was two Wednesdays ago, and that was an initial meeting. Went well, we essentially introduced ourselves to all the members involved there. We have another one coming up this week. Attended the Jefferson spaghetti dinner that was another date night with my wife, and she was raving about the spaghetti and the meatballs, and I concurd. It was good food, a good concert, really very well attended, doesn't matter what high school you go to, they're packed. And once again, I didn't write it down, and I think the playbill was left there for the next crew. So I didn't write down what version of the show that I saw, but it was awesome. So it's easy to say that. Had a board meeting for 917, board meeting slash study session, and among other things, we went over the goals update for the district. There was about 10, 11 goals on there, and then John Christensen, who's the superintendent, just went over the benchmarks and had we met them, where were we going in reference to those particular goals. Attended a meeting with the Valley View Middle School Student Council. That was really interesting. I think after the students got over the fact that it was Director Bennett, Director Oliva, and myself, there were three adults, you know, everyone was standing up kind of straight when we walked in the room, so they thought, ooh, who are these people? I think after they get over the initial surprise that there are adults at their student council meeting, they relaxed into what they did. And it was, it's a lot of fun to see their brains working and the wheels turning and the conversation that flowed, and the teacher that has that particular class had them switch stations so they couldn't sit with just their buddies, and it was a lot of fun to see. And then directly after that, I stayed, I think we all three stayed for, it was an update for the seventh grade class, and they went over their expectations. So in the fall, in the beginning of the school year, Ben McGrath, who's the principal over there, goes over there, brings the student body together and says, these are what our expectations are for the year. And this meeting in January was just sort of a catch-up, just a refresher. Here's where we wanted you to be, here's where we think we are, and here's some tweaking if we need to make any. So that was really interesting, just to see how that particular school communicates. Attended the PTSA Council presentation right here in Oak Grove Auditorium called Money Matters. Tony Gerard from RBCU was presenting, and it was really good ideas for your elementary, middle school, high school students on, you know, what is, what's a debit card, what's a credit card? They look the same, but they act different. Make sure you keep your receipts. How do you spend money? When do you spend money? Just basic things that maybe a dinosaur like myself, who has, still has a checking account, kind of understands. The kids today are in a much more digital world, and she referenced having a digital receipt, just sort of they keep a running tab in their, in their brain of what they've spent. And maybe it's, it would be good to encourage your students to write that down in a book somewhere, just so you can, you can balance that at the end of the month, or at the end of the week, or whenever they do that. So it's really interesting, interesting information. And also, we attended the MSBA Leadership Conference a couple of weeks ago down at the Convention Center, and it's always nice, I think this was my fifth one, just to share interest and ideas with our greater Minnesota counterparts. So this would be the Minnesota version, so the folks that come from up north and folks that come from perhaps down south in the I-90 corridor, we all get together here in the cities and just sit and share and chat and just compare notes on how do you do this, how do you do that? It's really interesting to see some of the rural districts are, they're nothing like what we have here in the metro. They're put together differently. There's co-ops, the travel times with the buses, the students, all the things that we take perhaps for granted here in Bloomington where a kid might be on a bus for maybe at the most 23 minutes. That's a quick hop in somebody in a rural county. So it's really, really interesting, and it's fun to share notes. That's it for me.
Anyone else have a thought?
Yeah, just another couple of comments on the MSBA Leadership Conference on the Friday morning session. I was able to get thoroughly enough to see the roundtable discussions and got to sit in on one that was led by our very own Dick Bergstrom, leading a session, I believe it's called, You've Been Elected to the Board, Now What?
Close enough.
And it was Dick and his element, and I want to thank Dick for sharing his expertise with other board members and representing the district. And that's something that you helped me with when I was new, so I'm glad to see you, you know, paying that forward to other districts. I think it was great. So thank you for that. Also, I attended the LMC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there was a representative from ClearScript talking about prescription costs and some new information to me that I wasn't aware of, that not all the prescription, not all the pharmacies are the same price, and they can differ greatly. And the ones that we might think are the cheapest are actually the most expensive. So he was saying the cheapest ones are the Fairview Pharmacy, and then followed by Costco, Sam's Club, and Cub Foods. And the ones to avoid are Walgreens and CVS. And then he wanted to let us know that CVS just bought out Target, which used to be pretty inexpensive, but they've already jacked the prices, so it might be, you know, worth your investment to find another pharmacy. If you're going just to get some amoxicillin for your kid's earache, it's not going to be that much of a difference in price, but if you're getting hundreds of dollars worth of prescriptions every month, you might want to go to the pharmacy at Fairview or something. And let's see, what, I also went to the Olson Elementary PTA meeting, and they are having an event coming up on February 2nd. It's called Protecting Our Kids, and it's a kidnapping prevention with Allison Fay, I think her name is. And she's from the Patty Wetterling Foundation. And apparently, some of the PTA members from Olson went and saw her speak at another school in Savage, and thought she was remarkable, and thought it was some good strategies to teach our parents to let their kids be aware of strangers and kidnappers without freaking them out. So it's a parents-only event, and I asked the president if anyone from the district can come, and she said yes, but just, they would email her so that they would know how many people are showing up so that they could have the appropriate venue. So her email, or their email address is olepta@gmail.com. And they're also having their carnival, and that's on February 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00, if you didn't get that. They're also having their carnival on February 26, on Friday, from 5:30 to 8:30, which I have little kids, and I love going to all the carnivals, so this is a good time because they always do them on the spring. I can't make all of them, so if you have little kids, it's great to come to these carnivals and get a nice, get out of the cold weather and get your kids from driving you crazy. And their kindergarten registration is on January 28. And also, they're starting a new program there called Sheridan Story. I don't know if you guys have heard of that. It's also, some other schools are doing, Normandale Hills is doing it. And it's a program from nonprofit organizations that are partnering with the schools to provide nutritious food for kids who have families that are in need. And the neat thing about this program is that it's a, they don't, the parents, they send home a mailer to the parents, and the parents would fill out if they, you know, need some food. And then it goes back to the teachers, and then once a week on Fridays, it comes to the school, and the teachers discreetly put it into the child's backpack like when the kids are at recess or at specialist. So the other kids aren't seeing that, oh, Johnny's getting food to take home, because, you know, that could be an embarrassment, and, you know, kids can be cruel. So it's a great program. I've done similar programs in my other teaching experiences, so I'm glad that we're doing it here. I'm sure some other schools are doing it as well, but I know that Olson and Normandale Hills are doing it. And let's see... And let's see, this last Saturday, I went to the, Kennedy had their family engagement. It was actually at Valleyview Middle School because there was a wrestling tournament at Kennedy. And it was titled One Nation, Many Beliefs. And it was, these family engagement seminars are always great. Radius does a great job and I think they keep on getting better. This was probably the best one that I've seen. And the place was packed, it was well-attended. We had some students come. We had two city councilmen there. We had John Olson and Dwayne Loman were there. So thank you for those two for showing up. And the principal and both APs from Kennedy were there, so it was great. And there's a lot of conversations about Islamic phobia, which is good since that's stuff that's going on in the media and some of the things that some of our presidential candidates are saying to actually have these conversations. And we actually did have a lot of good courageous conversations at this seminar. And I think the most powerful for me was when I, we were doing small groups and we had some students from Kennedy who were Muslims sharing their experiences in the schools. And most of it positive, saying that they've been welcomed and they're respected. But, you know, just hearing their experiences and some things that, comments that they've heard from the people that the people making them might not think that they're being prejudiced, but just the way they're coming across and things that we need to be aware of. So it was really good. And then today was a professional development day for all of our districts. So I decided to take up some of that opportunity. And I joined Indian Mounds this morning. They're doing some professional development on standards and technology. So I want to thank the great staff at Indian Mounds for welcoming me and letting me participate in their professional development. And I learned something about our principal there, Joan Mainland, that she's a former special ed teacher, which I didn't know. And as we all know, special ed teachers make the best administrators. So that school's in great hands with a great principal. And this afternoon, I went to Jefferson, did some Google Doc stuff, Google Forms. So that was a lot of fun. And a little shameless promotion this Sunday. The Bloomington Girls Hockey Association is having their annual Pancake Breakfast fundraiser at the Knights of Columbus from 8:30 to 12:00. And it's all-you-can-eat pancakes for $6. And the proceeds go to help to keep the cost down and to help fund scholarships for our girls. And this is a great program that's really doing a great job at revitalizing girls hockey in Bloomington. As you know, we've combined the two high school teams because there's not, we're losing numbers. And right now, our 8U program is one of the largest in the area. We have, we have five sections and each section has about 20 kids. So about 100 eight-year-olds out there skating. So it's a lot of fun. So I have tickets for $6 or you can buy them at the door for $6. And I think that's enough. Long report, I didn't make one last time, so I got to make up for it. Anyway, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, I attended PTA meetings at Washburn and Hillcrest Elementary. Unfortunately, they're the same night, same time. So I have to split half the meeting for one and half the meeting for the other one. But the main topics there was also on their fundraisers and getting ready for the food drive, you know, just, and then just kind of some general, their budget then, questions, that kind of stuff. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the thing that Director Bennett was talking about with the prescription. And one of the discussions there was also making sure since we are self-insured, making sure that everybody that's in our self-insured plan knows that some of the pharmacies are cheaper than the other ones. Because, you know, most of us don't know that. So how would you know that you're costing your own plan more money if someone didn't tell you? So that was part of the discussion is also making sure that we get that word out to all of them. I also had a chance to attend the spaghetti dinner at Jefferson and also enjoyed the show. What I also really enjoyed about it is, I saw this at both high schools, actually. I saw it at Kennedy when I went to theirs. But, you know, a lot of our students that have graduated in the last few years and their parents still come and really support this. So it was really fun. I saw a young man now that was in preschool with my daughters that's graduated, that was back for the weekend, I guess, because he goes to college somewhere else. But he was there, made sure that he was still there for the show choir dinner, so, for the choir dinner. So then also, I also attended the leadership conference. And one of the keynote speakers, I thought were both really good. But one of the breakouts that I went to was a school talking about how the title vote was from good to great. And this was a school district that has won numerous awards. So it was just interesting to listen to some of the things that they had done that they thought had made them, I guess, greater than they were before so that they could win all these awards. So it was just very interesting. And also, right before the school board meeting, I attended another session of teacher negotiations. So, thank you.
Well, I, first of all, it was very nice to be able at the, to be at the leadership conference, the MSBA Leadership Conference with all our group of school board members from Bloomington and to receive that special recognition for, you know, the commitment that we all have in our positions. And, you know, trying, all of us trying to do what's best for our community. And one of the things that we try to do is to learn more and participate of opportunities like the ones that MSBA provides. So that, I think it's great that we have all been taking advantage of that and participating and to the point where we can now say that we have received this special award. And while I was there, I found it, I found particularly interesting the keynote speaker, the first one that we had, when he talked about leadership and how important it is that our leaders work in collaboration, work together with the rest of our staff members and, you know, really look into different ways to take action and really do everything that we have in our, within our power to help our students and really provide them with the best opportunities and help them be successful. One of the sessions that I attended was about transgender, the new statutes and state and federal laws in regards to how to accommodate transgender students and employees. And I have talked to Superintendent Fujitaki about this and what's happening in the Bloomington School District as well and what we're doing in regards of this. And I'm pleased to know and to hear that we have been working hard and trying to accommodate different needs of all the different students and staff members. So that's good to know. And another event that I just recently participated of this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the National Education Association Political Conference. And I was pleased to see that there were some members of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers there. I had the opportunity to be in one of the sessions where they talked about the legislative priorities as well, you know, what is coming. And I was really pleased to hear all the different opinions from different teachers from many different school districts about the importance of helping our students and looking, all of us looking for different ways to work together and to come up with the best priorities that can be more helpful for both our teachers and our students and our community in general. So that was good to know. There's a lot of different things that we do have in common with other school districts. So it's great for me to see other, you know, perspectives and compare a little bit. And at the end of the day, we're all caring for the well-being of our students. So that's good. And I don't have anything else for now, so thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. I also just wanted to add that the District Diversity Advisory Committee also has sent out information on the Human Rights Commission and the League of Women Voters are hosting Selma, the Bridge to the Ballot, February 2nd, I think at 7:00 PM at the Bloomington City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. And to that, I just would like to add that two things that I'm involved in. Bloomington United for Youth is looking for nominations for their volunteer recognition program. It'll be held in February. And you can get the applications, I believe, on our website or there's a link. And, or you could just go direct to them, bloomitynewth.org. And the senior achievement nomination forms are available. And we'd like to see lots of seniors from both high schools nominated for those. And I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Great, thank you. I have three topics. The first is the school board will be having a meeting with its youth advisory council on February 8th at 5:30 PM at the Oak Grove Middle School Media Center. The second topic is a message for all parents and guardians of current fifth-grade students. All are welcome to, invited to an open house at the middle school your child will be attending next year. Each of our three middle schools will have an open house on February 1st, beginning at 6:30 PM. At these informational sessions, these open houses, you'll be receiving information about the educational programming, class offerings. You'll also be hearing about clubs, music, and athletic activities, and also hearing about how technology is integrated into the curriculum and instruction. Your child's welcome to join you at these, at this open house. And we look forward to you and your child joining us on February 1st. And the last topic is this morning, Dr. Highstead and I met with the Office of Higher Ed Commissioner Larry Pogromiller. The topic was a discussion about statewide longitudinal educational data system, also known as SLEDs. The commissioner, I'll tell you the highlights. The commissioner was very impressed with those research work Dave is doing with our, with the SLEDs information. And we talked about how the Office of Higher Ed and our district have partnered on research work related to SLEDs. And they're looking forward to Dr. Highstead being a resource to the Office of Higher Ed. So very productive meeting. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board this evening? Hearing none. We'll call this meeting adjourned. Don't forget, there's a closed session down in 601 right after this. Thank you.